Good evening and Happy New Year. Thank you, Mr. Birdy.
I was listening.
This evening, I'm acting as the President Pro Temp. And it is 6:30 PM on Monday, January 13th, 2020. And I now call the Winton Woods City Schools Board of Education organizational meeting to order. Please turn your cellphones to silent, then rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Birdy?
Here.
Dr. Cupoletti?
Here.
Dr. Johnson?
Here.
Mrs. Rugliss?
Here.
Our first item on the agenda is to talk about the appointment of a new board member. Board, I will entertain a motion to appoint the new board member at this time.
Madam President Pro Temp, I make a motion to appoint Mr. Gino McGowan as our newest board member to fill our vacant seat.
I'll second.
Okay, the nomination has been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing that there is no discussion, I declare the nomination for the appointment of the new Board of Education member closed. Mr. Seymour, will you please call the vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Cupoletti?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugliss?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan, would you please join Mr. Seymour at the podium? So the next item is the oath of office for the newly appointed elected board members, member.
I solemnly swear-
I solemnly swear-
That I will support the Constitution-
That I will support the Constitution-
Of the United States-
Of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio-
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio-
And that I will perform faithfully-
And that I will perform faithfully-
The duties of member of the Board of Education-
The duties as a member of the Board of Education-
Of the Winton Woods City School District-
Of the Winton Woods City School District-
Hamilton County, Ohio-
Hamilton County, Ohio-
To the best of my ability-
To the best of my ability-
And in accordance with the laws now in effect-
And in accordance with the laws now in effect-
And here and after to be enacted-
And here and after to be enacted-
During my continuance in said office-
During my continuance of said office-
Until my successor is elected and qualified-
Until my successor is elected and qualified-
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome.
Thank you so much.
I'll lay this at your spot and you can just sign it at your leisure.
Okay.
Mr. McGowan, the Winton Woods City School District Board of Education welcomes you as our new board member. Please join us here at the desk.
Do you want us to take a picture?
Oh, yes.
We're gonna take a picture.
We're gonna take a picture, I forgot. I was too busy reading.
You rehearsed it like ten times.
We're gonna take a picture with Mr. McGowan.
Ms. Jackson, get a good picture of the guys in the back, please.
You don't have my glasses right here. I don't have my glasses in my hand. I actually have your hands as well.
I'll take your glasses for you. Yeah, I'll put them on.
Now, you can't say a thing about this.
Oh, you missed it.
Now, we will have the oath of office for the elected board members. Mr. John Cupoletti will take his oath. John.
I solemnly swear-
No, 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 no. Randy's gonna-
I'll read it to you like I did Mr. McGowan, if that's okay. I solemnly swear-
I solemnly swear-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio-
And that I will perform faithfully- And that I will perform faithfully-
The duties of a member of the Board of Education-
The duties of a member of the Board of Education-
Of the Winton Woods City School District-
Of the Winton Woods City School District-
Hamilton County, Ohio-
Hamilton County, Ohio-
To the best of my ability-
To the best of my ability-
And in accordance with the laws now in effect-
And in accordance with the laws now in effect-
And here and after to be enacted-
And here and after to be enacted-
During my continuance set in office-
During my continuance set in office-
And until my successor-
And until my successor-
Is elected and qualified-
Is elected and qualified-
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
I solemnly swear-
I solemnly swear-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio-
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio-
And that I will perform faithfully-
And that I will perform faithfully-
The duties of a member of the Board of Education-
The duties of a member of the Board of Education-
Of the Winton Woods City School District-
Of the Winton Woods City School District-
Hamilton County, Ohio-
Hamilton County, Ohio-
To the best of my ability-
To the best of my ability-
And in accordance with the laws now in effect-
And in accordance with the laws now in effect-
And here and after to be enacted-
And here and after to be enacted-
During my continuance set in office-
During my continuance set in office-
And until my successor-
And until my successor-
Is elected and qualified-
Is elected and qualified-
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
I solemnly swear-
I solemnly swear-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio-
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio-
And that I will perform faithfully-
And I will perform faithfully-
The duties of a member of the Board of Education-
The duties of a member of Board of Education-
Of the Winton Woods City School District-
Of the Winton Woods City School District-
Hamilton County, Ohio-
Hamilton County, Ohio-
To the best of my ability-
To the best of my ability-
And in accordance with the laws now in effect-
And in accordance with the laws in effect-
And here and after to be enacted-
And here and after to be enacted-
During my continuance in said office-
During my continuance in said office-
And until my successor is elected and qualified-
And until my successor is elected and qualified-
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
All right, okay. The next item on the agenda is item 3.0, election of the Board President for the 2020 calendar year. Board, I will entertain nominations at this time.
I'd like to nominate Dr. Viola Johnson as President of the Winton Woods School Board.
I'll second.
The nomination has been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing that there are none other nomination, I declare the nomination for Board President closed. Mr. Seymour, will you please call the vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Cupoletti?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugliss?
Aye.
The vote passes unanimously. As the President Pro Temp, I now declare Dr. Viola Johnson elected President of the Winton Woods City School District Board of Education for the term of one year. Mr. Seymour, will you please come forward and administer the President's oath of office?
If you would like it, and then you state your name.
I- I, Viola Johnson.
Solemnly swear-
Solemnly swear-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio-
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio-
And that I will perform faithfully-
And that I will perform faithfully-
To the best of my ability-
To the best of my ability-
The duties of President-
The duties of President-
Of the Board of Education-
Of the Board of Education-
Of the Winton Woods City School District-
Of the Winton Woods City School District-
Hamilton County, Ohio-
Hamilton County, Ohio-
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
I would like to turn the gavel over to Dr. Viola Johnson as the 2020 President of the Winton Woods City School District.
Thank you, Mrs. Rugliss. Okay, moving on with our next item on the agenda. The next item on the agenda is 4.01, which is the election of the Board Vice President for 2020 calendar year. I will entertain a nomination at this time.
I would like to nominate Ms. Katrina Rugliss as Vice President of the Winton Woods School Board.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing that there is none, the nominations, I declare the nomination for the Vice President of the School Board closed. Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Cupoletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugliss?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. As a newly elected President of the Winton Woods City School Board of Education, I now declare Mrs. Katrina Rugliss elected Vice President of the Winton Woods City School Board of Education for the term of one year. Mr. Seymour, would you please come forward and administer the Vice President's oath of office?
And this time you state your name.
Okay.
I-
I, Katrina Rugliss.
Solemnly swear-
Solemnly swear-
That I will support the Constitution-
That I will support the Constitution-
Of the United States-
Of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio-
And the Constitution for the State of Ohio-
And that I will faithfully-
And I will faithfully-
To the best of my ability-
To the best of my ability-
Perform the duties of Vice President-
Perform the duties of Vice President-
Of the Board of Education-
Of the Board of Education-
Of the Winton Woods City School District-
Of the Winton Woods City School District-
Hamilton County, Ohio-
Hamilton County, Ohio-
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
What did I do? Shock you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll give you mine in a little bit, Randy. The next item on the agenda is 5.01, the schedule of the regular school board meetings. Board, a motion is in order. The meeting dates are listed there, so I am hoping that you've had a chance to look at all those dates and confirm them on your calendars.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting calendar as presented on board docs for our regular meetings, special meetings, and superintendent briefings.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion or are there any questions? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Cupoletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugliss?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 6.01, which is the resolution of the adoption of the fiscal year 2020 through 2021 tax budget. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes, I'm presenting to the Board the tax budget for the period of July 1/20 through 2021. This is to send down to the Hamilton County Auditor's Office to support that all taxes that have been levied are needed. And as you recall, I asked a resolution at the work session to approve to use the five year forecast for the general fund. What we're basically sending down is the estimate of expenditures for any funds that collect real estate taxes, that being the general fund, the bond retirement fund, permanent improvement fund, and the facilities and classroom maintenance fund, and stating that we need those to support our expenditure program. And then, as you know, in April, we'll get back the amounts that he has assessed that we would levy to the taxpayers.
Thank you, Mr.-
So I would ask that you approve the budget for the 2021.
So I make a motion to approve the resolution of adoption of fiscal year 2021 tax budget and the 2021 tax budget as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Cupoletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugliss?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the investments of inactive and interim funds. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Here, I'm asking the Board's permission to invest any inactive or interim funds for investments, always according to board policy, and that I bring those to you on a regular basis for a report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion would be in order.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to authorize the Treasurer to invest inactive and interim funds in permissible investments pursuant to the board policy and Ohio Revised Code when funds are available.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Cupoletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugliss?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 8.01, is the authorization of official signatures. Board, a motion is in order.
I'd like to make a motion as per Ohio Revised Code 3313.51, request motion to authorize a President and Treasurer to be the official signers for payments of funds for the Board of Education, and further authorizes that one of the two authorized sign checks on all Board of Education accounts, and that the Treasurer's signature may be a facsimile.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Cupoletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugliss?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 9.01, which is the resolution requesting the county auditor to make advance payments of taxes. Mr. Seymour, would you please give us more details on this, too?
Here, I'm asking for the Board to pass a resolution to allow me to request taxes that are available as paid to the county auditor on, it's called an advance, until the final settlement. That way, we get the real estate taxes as they're paid into the Hamilton County Treasurer. We in turn turn around and invest those funds. And I need the Board's permission to get those advances from the Hamilton County Auditor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion to approve this resolution is in order.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution requesting the county auditor make advance payments of taxes as presented.
And I will second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Cupoletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugliss?
Aye.
And Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 10.01, which is regarding the funds, transfer, advances, and advance returns. Again, Mr. Seymour, would you give us information and details?
Yeah, here, I'm asking the Board's permission to make fund-to-fund transfers. The one you may be familiar with is when I ask the Board to transfer funds to the athletic fund, or if I ask to make an, or if I make an advance from the general fund to another fund and then return it. It's giving me permission to do that as needed and to bring it to the next regular meeting for your approval. The only one that I've consistently done is $20,000 from general fund to our student athletic fund, and I've always brought that before the Board for their approval.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order.
I'd like to make a motion authorizing the Treasurer to make fund-to-fund advances, advance returns, and transfers as needed throughout the year with board ratification as part of the financial reports at the next regular meeting.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Cupoletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugliss?
Aye.
And Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 11.01, which is regarding the board member participation in the employee's benefit plan. Again, Mr. Seymour, would you give us details on that?
Sure. Each board member has the right to receive health care benefits, dental benefits, and life benefits at the board member's expense. So if the board member would choose to exercise their option, all board members must vote on that. So if anyone is interested in being part of our group health plan or dental plan, this would be the time to exercise that right and elect to be part of our health care program.
Thank you, Mrs.-
And if no one desires to, then we just move on.
Okay. So, Board, let's get a motion on the floor first, and then we can open it up for discussion.
I'd like to make a motion that the current board members may exercise the option to participate in a district's employee's benefit plans at each board member's expense.
Thank you, Mrs. Rugliss. I need a second.
I second it.
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion regarding this? Is there anybody who would like to participate? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Cupoletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugliss?
Aye.
And Dr. Johnson?
Aye. And to be clear, we are all voting to say, no, we do not want to get the insurance.
We're all voting for no participation.
For no participation.
No participation.
That's right. That's exactly what we're voting for. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is 12.01, which is the Fiscal Officer of the Student Activities Account. Mr. Smith, would you give us some details on that?
Well, yes, Madam President and Board. Each year, the student activity, there are fundraisers that have to be approved by the superintendent to make sure that they are in compliance with raising dollars for student travel, student activities, and at this particular time, the request is for the superintendent to be the sign-off officer of all the student activity programs, and these programs are presented to the Board once a year.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, a motion would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion that the superintendent is to be appointed to be the sign-off officer on all student activity programs, and these programs shall be presented to the Board once each year. The superintendent will also have the authority to approve and/or modify the student activity budgets throughout the year as warranted.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote? Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Cupoletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugliss?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 13.01, which is regarding the student activity accounts. Board, a motion is in order.
And these are the list of accounts that we're bringing to you-
Oh, yes, they are listed. There, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that in the last motion said they would be brought to you once each year.
Yeah.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to request authorization for the student activity accounts for the fiscal years 2020 and 2021 and the calendar year 2020 as presented in board docs.
Second.
So, okay, through me all, Jeff Birdy, Katrina Rugliss. Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Cupoletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugliss?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 14.01, which is the authorization of the then and now certificate. Mr. Seymour, would you please give the Board details on this, please?
Yes, according to Ohio law, if a purchase has been made and not a proper purchase order has been put in place for it, up to $3,000, I may go ahead and allow the purchase to proceed and say that the funds were available when it was made and they're still available, and we put the purchase order in effect as of then and now. The funds were available then and they're available now. This does happen from time to time with certain purchases that are made, and sometimes in a rush situation where they kind of forget the rules and regulations. But anything over that amount would have to be brought to the Board.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion as per Ohio Revised Code 5705.41 to request authorization for the Treasurer to exercise the then and now certification of funds, provided the funds are within the Board-approved appropriations and free of any previous encumbrances.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion?
Yes, Madam President. The piece that the Treasurer mentioned, when people forget the steps, sometimes that's not the case. It's when the vendor releases to say that these things can be purchased. Sometimes they're giving us information at the last minute, and then we have to do a turnaround quickly, and that gives the Treasurer the authority to do it expeditiously.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other-
We do, from time to time, have vendors that forget to bill.
Yes, absolutely. Then they want to bill all at one time from like several years.
As long as it doesn't go over $3,000.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Cupoletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is fifteen oh one, which is the authorization to modify appropriations. Again, Mr. Seymour, back to you.
Here, I'm asking for the board's permission to modify the appropriations from time to time. A department may wish not to spend certain funds on supplies and move it to a purchase service for software or vice versa, or something, an emergency situation comes up in maintenance, and I transfer funds from one of their accounts to another. And when I do that, I make sure that the total authorized appropriations never exceed what you have previously authorized, and that we never exceed the amount of resources as certified by the Hamilton County Auditor. And then I always bring, as you know, towards the end of the year, I'll bring back those modified appropriations for your approval. But it, and the general fund, it will be the same amount as you approved in October.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order.
Madam President, I'll make a motion requesting authorization for the treasurer to modify the original line item appropriations as set by the board. The treasurer shall not alter the total amended appropriations as adopted by the board. All modifications must be within the last board adopted appropriations measure. The treasurer shall stay within the funds available as certified by the Budget Commission of Hamilton County, or as amended and approved on or before June 30th by the Budget Commission.
Second?
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Kupuletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugliss?
Aye.
And Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is sixteen oh one, which is the recognition of support groups. And we do recognize that there are three groups that are recognized, so board, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion that the recognized support groups are the athletic boosters, the performing arts boosters, the Wintonwoods PTA. Each of the support groups have provided the board with their 2019, 2020 budgets for review.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Kupuletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugliss?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is seventeen oh one, which is the appointment of a purchasing agent. Again, board, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to request authorization for Mr. Steve Denny, Executive Director of Accountability and Business Affairs, to serve as the superintendent's designated purchasing agent for the district on all purchases not exceeding $250,000 as per board policy.
Second?
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion?
Mrs. Rugliss, second?
Yes, Mrs. Rugliss.
Thank you.
Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Kupuletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugliss?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the Board Council Committee and Legislative Liaison Appointments, and this is me here. So this is, we're going to go through this, we talked a little bit about this. So the first item here is for the Ohio School Board Association Liaison, and that will be me, Dr. Johnson. The Great Oaks Board of Education will be Mr. Birdy, and he will serve through December 31st, 2022. The next item is the Superintendent's Review and Evaluation Liaison, and that will be myself, Dr. Johnson, and Mrs. Rugliss. The next item is the Treasurer's Review and Evaluation Liaison, and that will be myself and Mr. Birdy. The next items are the municipality representatives, and for Forest Park, it will be myself, Dr. Johnson, and I will accompany, ask Mr. Smith to accompany on those. Then Green Hills will be Dr. Kupuletti and Mr. Birdy. For Springfield Township in Wyoming, that will be Mrs. Rugliss and Mr. McGowan. For Public Records Designee, that will be Mr. Randy Seymour. The Superintendent's Committee Liaisons, the first committee is the Student Achievement Committee, and that will be Mrs. Rugliss and Dr. Kupuletti. For the Community Engagement, it will be Mrs. Rugliss and Mr. McGowan. For Financial Advisory, it will be Mr. Birdy and Mrs. Rugliss. And for Policy, it will be myself, Dr. Johnson, and Dr. Kupuletti. For Athletic and Performing Arts, it will be myself, Dr. Johnson, and Mr. McGowan. And for the Board Member Handbook, it will be all five board members, which this will probably take place at a work session when we're all in session together. The next item is the OSBA Urban School District Advisory Network Liaison, and that will be Mrs. Rugliss. And the last one is the OSBA SALT Liaison, which is myself, Dr. Johnson, and Mrs. Rugliss. So, if all are clear with that, then we'll just move on. There's not a motion, but we all agree that these are the committees that we will serve on, and I will pull this piece out and send it to everyone in an email, so that just remind you on what committees that you've been appointed to serve on. The next item on the agenda is nineteen oh one, which is the continuation of the memberships in the OSBA, the Ohio School Board Association. Board, a member, a motion is in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the continued memberships and subscriptions for the following: Ohio School Boards Association, January through December 20th, subscription to the briefcase and school management news, January through December 20th, and participation in the Ohio Schools Boards Association Legal Assistant Fund, January through December 2020.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Kupuletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugliss?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is nineteen oh two, which is the continuation of the membership in the NSBA. Board, a motion is in order.
I'll make a motion, Madam President, requesting approval for continuation of membership in National School Boards Association from January through December of 2020.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Kupuletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugliss?
Aye.
And Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is twenty point oh one, which is the Other Business or Board of Education Operating Protocol. Board, a motion is in order to adopt the Board of Education Operating Protocol for 2020.